All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, June 12, 2023, just to inform the committee and the viewing public here that this meeting is being recorded. So we'll do the roll call. I don't see David, Jessica.
Here.
June.
Here.
Lisa B.
Here.
Lisa M.
Yes.
Randy.
Here.
Susan is not here. Tom?
Here.
And I'm here. That was a quorum. If you could all please rise, we will go back to doing the Pledge of Allegiance, since it's on the agenda. All right. My Pledge of Allegiance, Susan Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law. Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex School Committee will be held at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 20. So we have the consent agenda with a lot of meeting minutes, accounts payable warrants, and payroll warrants, a series of donations. I'll take a motion if someone's.
Still moved? Second.
June and Randy. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Are there any items that folks would like to pull from tonight's agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull the handbooks. Wait until the July meeting, if possible, please.
Okay.
And the small memorial lease, we won't be voting on the whole lease, but we're going to just.
Still going to talk about?
A portion of it.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Moving on to public comment, we had two people submit for public comment this evening. First, Catherine Spofford, if you're here. All right. And then, just a reminder for public comment, you have three minutes, and we won't be able to get into back and forth discussion, but we'll hear your comments and likely refer anything to subcommittees or the administration as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Spofford, and I'm a resident of Townsend. I'm here this evening to request from the school committee that you take time to seriously review the anti-bullying policy, to make it a no-tolerance policy, and to make a policy on the use of cell phones during school hours. After a discussion today, I realized these policies come from the state, that the school committee does not have a lot of input on these policies, but feel the need to express my opinion. In January, a 10th-grade student was bullied by a group of students and eventually attacked at school on school grounds by one of the bullies. The attack was planned and recorded by another student and shared through email. There were consequences to the attacker and the one who recorded the attack, but the victim's safety and security were shattered. After the attack, the victim was contacted by many other students who said they were being bullied but were afraid to report it because of retaliation from the students. When the aggressors returned to school, they were allowed to continue in the classes that the victim was in, but fear caused the victim the inability to sit in her classes if one of the bullies were also in the classroom. The retaliation then turned to the victim's friends and the bully and continued with her friends. So things continued normally for the aggressors, but the victim had to change her schedule. Is bullying even addressed to the students in the schools? And is it not just, and it's not just in the high school, but in the elementary schools and the middle schools? I feel the administration at the high school did the best they could to address the victim's needs with what the policy allows. The blame is with the policy, not with the administration. The next is a policy on cellphone usage for students. Is there even a policy? Why are students allowed to use their cell phones during school hours and to text and make calls? There should be a policy on this. This would help with cyberbullying, taking pictures and making videos and sharing while in school and out of school. Again, this is something that needs to be addressed. If the students were not allowed to use cell phones, the fear of missing out on something would be less because none of the students would have access to their phones while in school. To have policies are necessary, but to have well-thought and well-written policies to follow are essential for the good of both the students and the staff. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening, and I'm hopeful that you have heard my concerns. And please feel free to share with the Massachusetts Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just state your address for the record, please?
312 Main Street in Townsend.
Townsend. Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess just as follow-up to the items raised from a policy perspective, Randy, I think just refer that to.
Absolutely. There already have been brought up asking about looking into a cellphone policy. We just haven't had a meeting to start to address that.
Okay. Excellent. And then, it sounds like you'd already spoken to the administration about the other issues. Do you feel there's additional follow-up needed there?
No.
Outside of the policy stuff?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
And then next, we had Margaret Genota. No? All right. Okay. Then we will move on to Chairperson's Report. The only thing I had is, I know Elisa B. had brought up at the last meeting just around meeting times, so I just wanted to get some input on that based on what she had sent out and see where we stand on meeting times in terms of longer meetings, less frequently, or the schedule we've kind of had is multiple times a month, but then obviously it would be shorter meetings. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at Elisa or Lisa, if you want to kind of explain what you had sent out.
Well, it was the first meeting, the organizational meeting, that it got brought up, the changing it from biweekly to monthly. And I know it was voted in as going monthly, but I just, I brought it up at the last meeting to re-discuss it because I think Dave Carney had a couple of good points where the meetings are going to be longer and topics will be lost, and if there's like a lot of things that need to be addressed, like the budget and everything, it's going to make the meetings very long. And my thought also on the Thursdays was going to be hard for maybe not just us, but parents, guardians, students, or citizens just to attend, just because there's a lot of school functions going on on Thursdays versus the Mondays. But if you look at, if you go back, I'm not sure who made up the first original thing going from the biweekly to the monthly. If you look at that original agenda, there's actually only like three extra meetings in the year because of the way the holidays.
The holidays, and actually it was every three weeks, every two weeks is what that one was trying to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, holidays didn't lead into that.
Yeah. So.
All right. Does anybody have any comments or input or discussion on that?
I do. Personally, I'd prefer lesser meetings, even if they're longer, but I'm okay either way with that. But we did talk about 6:00 p.m. meetings, and it's noted here 7:00 p.m. I'd still rather the earlier side, even if we have more meetings, either way. I'd prefer 6:00 p.m. if we can.
I also like the 6:00 p.m. idea. I don't really care which day, just 6:00 p.m. would be nice.
Okay. Anybody else?
Are these going to be held in person?
That was not the intent, no. It was to stay remote. Should have increased public participation, seems to get better attendance, until we can figure out the technology aspect to do kind of a hybrid approach. I feel to get more people at the meeting right now is a little more important, unless we have an issue, as we do tonight, that we wanted to do in person. But other than that, I don't, I don't see the need until we can figure that out. Anybody else? All right. I'm not hearing a strong desire to change. Maybe we give it some time and see how it goes. Is that fair for everybody? And then we can.
So currently, we're going to be a Thursday at 6?
Yeah. Our next, our next meeting is Thursday at 6:00 in July.
Lisa, just a question. Why do you think Thursday would be more difficult than a Monday for parents?
I think there's a lot more school functions that go on on Thursdays, like especially with sports and different things like that.
Right. I've been out for a while, so.
Once a school year attends and like, I mean, one of my girls was in truck, one of them was in band, so there was a lot of different ones.
Yeah.
But I think just in general, there's less things going on on Mondays.
So as far as scheduled events in the district go, we can certainly control most of those. The thing that we can't control are athletics, because those are scheduled essentially by the, by the Athletic Conference and the MIAA.
Right.
But we can certainly look to, whatever is in our control, avoid conflict, whether it be Monday night or Thursday night. And that's something we can certainly discuss over the, over the summer at our admin retreat.
One thing that I thought had gotten brought up was that Pepperell Select Meeting is Monday nights.
Correct.
The same Monday nights that we have. But I don't think that Townsend or Ashby had any of those select meetings on Thursday nights.
I think they're Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I remember it.
That is why we were thinking about Thursday, just to have a change off the Monday, have a little bit more time during the week to review the packet and just try out the Thursdays. We can always go back if, you know, after a couple of meetings, Thursday doesn't seem to be working for everybody. We can reconsider and change the meeting schedule.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I too like the 6:00, even if we go back to the more meetings on either day, 6:00 definitely is, is a little bit nicer. And I believe the history of the 7:00 was because at one point we had a number of people who worked in Boston, and the travel time back from there was very difficult to get here for 6:00.
Okay. That makes sense. All right. So we'll, we'll leave it there. Again, if there are significant conflicts or issues, we'll, we'll bring it back up and make adjustments as we need to.
Okay.
And Lisa, I appreciate you raising that and just keeping the discussion open, so we're mindful of attendance and conflicts and all that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The only thing from a chairperson's report, I know last meeting, I'm just trying to share a little more about the committee and what we do and how we do things, and I think as we talk about scheduling meetings, and we'll talk about our meeting norms and protocols later, so we can talk about how we operate in that sense, but we'll get to some of that later, and I'll continue in future meetings to share some more information about the inner workings of the committee. So I'll go now to the superintendent's report. Senator Morgan?
Sure. Just a couple items real quickly. Just wanted to congratulate the high school administration and also the Building and Grounds Department for putting together a fantastic graduation for the class 2023 on Friday, June 2nd, with 174 seniors graduating. Really, both groups did a tremendous job with their flexibility in maintaining an outside possibility and an indoor possibility. We did end up coming indoors, but it took really a team effort here at the high school, along with district Building and Grounds, to make that happen, and they did a really a fantastic job. So kudos to you. And just wanted to make the committee aware that the district will be moving forward with a pilot of the new approved DESI curriculum in grades five and six for investigating history in the 2023-24 school year through a grant. The curriculum is comprehensive, culturally responsive. It's an inclusive curriculum that DESI developed in collaboration with Primary Source. The curriculum is fully aligned with the Massachusetts History and Social Science Framework and is free to all Massachusetts school districts. I will be putting out an announcement on the, during my weekly update, just to let everyone know that this is happening and also give them access to that curriculum through a live link. That's all I have.
Excellent. Any questions? Any questions?
Question on the curriculum, is it just a new curriculum within the same frameworks? Are, are things changing between years again, as they have in the past?
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Boboah Reese. He can certainly answer the specifics on that.
Sure. It's within the same framework.
Okay. Fantastic. I know there's been a couple of sketchy years when things move between grades.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the out-of-state field trip requests for Nissatissa and Hawthorne Brook.
Yes, we have Ms. Young and Ms. Olmsted here to present.
Awesome. Come on up.
Mr. Worth.
Oh, Mr. Worth, sorry. I didn't know if you were presenting as well. I apologize, Mr. Worth.
Earlier this year, we had come to you with a presentation about the experience that Mr. Webster and Mr. Worth had at Camp KWE in Maine, and they had a great experience. And we're looking to bring our current fifth grade, next year's sixth graders up for a three-day experience in November for next year. It looks like the cost would be about $260 per student, and that includes two and a half days at the camp, transportation, which is, transportation's quite expensive, so transportation to Maine and back, all of their meals would be covered while they're there, and then all of the educational experiences while they're there. So we're hopeful that we can provide that for students in November.
Excellent. Any questions, Randy?
And this is in addition to the eighth-grade Washington trip that both do. Are you finding that, I know for a while there, having the sixth-grade trip and then eighth-grade trip was financially difficult, and I know, at least while my kids were going through the middle school, you know, some had trips, some didn't, and it was trending towards just the Washington trip. So are you feeling that this?
Yeah. We haven't had a trip in sixth grade in many, many years. We did let that go for a while, and so we haven't, we haven't had field trips, you know, for a few years now. But $260, and there is some scholarship available, so we're hoping that that's doable for families. And if we could let families know now that this, this trip would be coming up, perhaps over the summer, students could help earn some money for the trip. But we are looking at different companies for the Washington, D.C. trip as well, just to see what the costs are for various companies, to see if we can be most cost-effective.
Okay.
Did you, did you have financial assistance, like scholarships for the D.C. trip this year?
We did, yeah.
Did you have, did you have enough funds for those that requested it, or?
We did.
Yeah?
For every family that asked for it.
Oh, excellent. Good.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Cryin?
Sorry. Maine in November, and it's a science.
I know. Bring your jacket.
It was cold.
I assume the accommodations are warm enough?
Yeah. The accommodations there are phenomenal. I mean, it's like a multimillion-dollar camp. It's not the, you know, rundown summer camp that you remember growing up. It's, it's really nice. They're, you know, the cabins are great for the students, you know, no one's going to freeze. You know, outside, they got to bring jackets for sure for all the activities, but all the accommodations are really great up there.
My students go to a camp in Maine in the spring, but it's a little warmer there.
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll take a motion. The school committee vote to approve the NMS and HBMS travel to Northboro, Maine in November to attend the Keeve Wavis Education Camp.
Still moved? Second.
June and Lisa. Any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
They're actually up for the next.
They are. I see that. Okay. Next up, we have the Media and Research Specialist proposal.
Do you have the PowerPoint we were, it's okay if it's not projected, or you provided the PowerPoint?
I believe we.
Yes, we were.
We switch over. Yes.
Awesome. So we're coming to you guys, we're hoping to rebrand our librarian position to the Media and Research Specialist and kind of swap that, I guess, with the potential reduction of the technology teacher in the middle schools. So currently, our technology class is in the middle schools. We're kind of built for a different age, when, you know, students didn't all have one-to-one Chromebooks, they didn't have, you know, devices constantly at their fingertips, and obviously, this was developed pre-COVID, where technology wasn't a huge factor in our lives. So technology class became, you know, a place for keyboarding skills, for computer hardware, you know, diving into what hardware and software is, basic computer functions, looking at like Microsoft Office Suite, you know, Word docs, sheets, building presentations, also graphic design, and then more recently, we've moved into coding for technology class. And that's kind of where technology class is, is currently. Let's go to the next slide.
Sure. And so what we're looking at, if you flip to the next slide, is that the role of the middle school media specialist has really undergone many changes over time, and it's reflective of the educational practices changing, but also the increased technology in our world. In the past, librarians were focused really on managing collections of books and resources. They were cataloging and organizing and trying to maintain school libraries to make sure that students had a wide range of materials. Now, in today's day and age, our media specialists are managing media and information literacy. We live in a world where our students are constantly, you know, living in a saturated environment with digital and media. And so the media specialist really needs to help students develop skills to help them find and evaluate and use this information responsibly and effectively. These skills are really crucial for, for our students, as well as research skills. Our media specialist helps students to learn how to formulate research questions and find resources and then analyze them, and then synthesize that information and be able to do something meaningful with it. These skills are going to empower students and help them in all of their other subjects across the board. Digital literacy as well. Our media specialist helps students to navigate all sorts of digital tools and resources, such as online databases and eBooks and multimedia materials. As students spend so much time online, our middle school librarians really need to help students with digital citizenship and online safety. I know that we all see that students, they need to be responsible when they're online, and they need to learn about privacy, they need to learn about cyberbullying, protection, and online etiquette. I mean, that, that's first and foremost, and those are lifelong skills that our students need. Additionally, just promoting the love of reading, that's something that, you know, has not, you know, died off. We need our librarians to help with that and to expose our students to different genres and authors, a diverse collection of materials, so that we can help students build their reading skills and their vocabulary, collaboration and communication. I was in a library recently, and I was whispering, just because you, when you're in a library, you whisper, and the librarian actually came over to me and said, you know, you don't need to whisper in here. Libraries don't need to be quiet places anymore. And, and she was quite right. Library is where students work in collaborative groups, and they talk and they, they work together, so that this space serves as a place for collaboration and discussion and teamwork. And our librarians, they, they work with all teachers in our buildings, and they, they help them gather resources for their own classrooms as well. Additionally, the library media specialist would work with creating a culture of global awareness, exposing our students to different resources that foster cultural understanding and empathy and global awareness, to help them, prepare them to be more informed global citizens, and just to teach students to love to learn and to want to explore and to learn more, and that will help them, you know, across the board. Overall, the middle school librarian, the role has really changed from being a kind of a custodian of books to more of an information specialist, collaborator, and technology integrator. And we hope that this, this role would really help change our, our schools and help our learners in this new digital age of technology and information.
And so the question rests with us, why is this important now? I know that my own middle schoolers, as well as those that I work with every day, can operate a Chromebook probably far more efficiently than I can, and I've been doing it for quite a while. Quite honestly, many of the skills that are currently taught in computer class, students already know. And so we need to look at how we can best support our students moving forward. We need to make sure that we're strengthening our students' research skills. We have a phenomenal ELA curriculum. A lot of it is nonfiction, and it comes with the assumption that students are really strong researchers. And what our ELA teachers are finding is that that's not necessarily the case, and they could use additional assistance, learning how to become better researchers. Those research skills will serve our students really well in eighth grade when they complete their civics action project. I know that there was a, you know, the high schoolers' projects were on display today. That starts in eighth grade, though. They kind of go through their first run of it then, and in order to be able to complete these projects, they need to be really, really solid researchers. Finally, in addition to being able to conduct the research, students need to be able to evaluate the research that they're finding online. They need to be able to tell what is valid and what isn't valid, and what's a reputable source and what is not a reputable source. Finally, I have a quote for you on this last slide. It says, "Teaching students to be critical media consumers is of utmost importance in today's digital age. Media has a significant impact on our lives, shaping our perspectives, influencing our beliefs, and driving our behavior. Given the vast amount of information and media content available, it is crucial for students to develop the skills to analyze and evaluate media messages effectively." This quote is from ChatGPT. This is the world that our students are living in, and we need to do our best to support them.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have many, but anybody else want to go first? No? Okay. So who designs the curriculum?
It's based on the state's frameworks.
Okay. So there is a state framework for a library ADS specialist. What's the classification? Is this a licensed teacher?
It is.
Yeah.
It's the media specialist.
Okay. So it's a media specialist as opposed to a librarian, but both of them are on that teacher level?
It's, it's library media specialist, I believe, is the title, and it's K through 12.
Fantastic. And then, is the expectation to have a library media specialist in every school?
So we were talking about it for middle school.
Yeah.
Okay. So for both middle schools, but with the librarian positions being cut from the elementary schools, so those will be, obviously not your presentation, sorry, that's a little divergent, but there you go. Okay.
Yes, I, I was just going to say, so we are asking to, to instate this new, this new or rebranded media specialist position in the two middle schools in place of a technology teacher.
And it would be a full-time teaching position.
And it would be a full-time teaching position.
I think the elimination of the elementary school positions becomes even that much more important.
Sure.
To make sure that our students.
And there would still be a paraprofessional working in the library with this, with the media research specialist. So it would actually be two people in the same space. Paraprofessional would be more focused on signing in, signing out books, things of that nature, answering student questions, supervising, where this person would be teaching separate classes, likely in the same space, but potentially doing some in the, in the computer lab as well. Terrific.
And many of the standards taught in the computer that were typically taught in the computer lab that are still, you know, relevant and important for students, like coding, those are taught in our STEM class, which students do attend in all four grades.
Great. Thank you. Randy?
First, I'd like to say thank you for recognizing the need for the research media and teaching the kids about the online literacy. I think that is incredibly important for every reason that you stated there. These kids are online, and they just don't have the awareness yet to know what they're looking at. I know I go with my kids all the time, well, what was that source? And we have to kind of drill that into them, that that's number one thing when they're looking in this vast, you know, internet where anything can come up in front of them. They have to be so conscious about what it, where it's coming from. So I am in full support of this. And this is going to be in the rotation in place of technology. Technology is in the rotation of specials now?
Correct.
Okay. So this would replace that. What about some of the stuff? I know you were saying that a lot of the current technology classes are a little bit, I don't want to say outdated, but basically outdated, because a lot of the kids are coming in with, with some of this knowledge, but what about the knowledge that they are still learning? Coding, most kids, or there's a number of kids that don't do any coding. I know my kids never would have touched any kind of coding had they not had it in their class. I watched my kids go through, even with the technology class, learning about Excel, learning just the basics, and just the basics about the, you know, the presentation, the slides. And they stumbled through it, even with a class on it. So how are we going to address, you know, the media specialist is, you know, teaching them how to do all of this, but who's teaching them that technology portion? Where is there going to be help for them if they need help?
So I think a lot of that is absorbed now into our STEM class, which also addresses So I think a lot of that is absorbed now into our STEM class, which also addresses the coding piece of that.
And it's also integrated in what they do every day. So it used to be students would have graph paper and they would, you know, make their table on the graph paper for science. Now they're using a Chromebook and they're using an Excel or Google Sheets to make it. So every day they're using these tools and it's become so commonplace that they don't need to, you know, go to a computer class to make a slideshow about something, to practice making a slideshow. They're making slideshows every day in all of their classes. So it's, it's so integrated, which is fabulous. We never thought we would get here where everybody has their own computer and they can, you know, do it all day.
I'm glad to see that it's come along. My kids are, the youngest is now four years out of middle school, so.
Yeah. It's changed so much in the last three.
Our STEM classes also have 3D printing and, which is a Project Lead the Way course, as well as a robotics coding class, which is in eighth grade, also Project Lead the Way. So those, those two classes are very tech-heavy for those grades.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just had a question. It looked like internet safety and net etiquette was one of the topics that's taught. Is, is the cyberbullying side of things taught in this as well, or is it?
That is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Not that they're teaching cyberbullying, but teaching how.
Prevention, no.
Thank you. All right, then seeing no further questions, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. David, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Spalding Memorial School lease agreement. Superintendent Morgan.
Yes, so there have actually been a couple of edits, so we would like to potentially look at just one section of the lease agreement this evening, which is the, the baseball and softball field development. I'm not sure, do we actually have images for that in the packet? I'm not.
I don't think so.
I don't see images.
Seeing it, but, but we actually did have a meeting, a policy meeting with representatives from the town, town manager, as well as representatives from Townsend, Ashby, baseball and softball. And they are looking to put in a fields complex, but, but they are, they are essentially going to allow North Middlesex to use the field during recess and to keep those fields closed during the school day while, while students are in session. So it was a very collaborative meeting. Again, Ms. Rush was there, as well as, as well as Ms. Haynes, and I do think it's something that the school committee should consider. Again, they are essentially taking ownership of the field. They are going to maintain the field. There is a septic tank issue, but that, again, there's no significant construction. The ball field is going to be placed on top of it, and there is currently a field on top of it now. But they are going to maintain it. It is going to be fenced in, which could actually end up providing some security to our students, because there will be some advertisements on the fencing along the roadside, so it could just provide some privacy for our students as well. And again, we'll have the ability to unlock and lock the gates ourselves during the school day and also ask if residents are using the facilities during the school day to leave. There will also be signage stating that those fields are closed during the school day. I don't know.
Just to give a little feedback, this, anyone who went to the town meeting in Townsend would know, the other towns would not, but this was a warrant article that had passed as well, to have the fields not leased to the school, but to be available for the baseball, softball, to develop the complex that they want to do. So that's what put us into communication and negotiations with the town as we're trying to get a new Spalding Memorial lease. Number two on the lease, the lease premises lays out what is now going to be taken out from our normal or our current lease, which is just a description of where the fields are and what they're, you know, best we can do as far as what streets line it and trying to define that space. We are not responsible for the maintenance of that, but the rest of number two on the lease here just describes the access that we're going to have, which is what Brad was very nice to, or very well defined our access to that. The principal for Spalding was at the meeting as well, and she seemed to be happy about the provisions that we had and that she would have for the access for the students. There were other changes that were last minute brought to us for this lease, so I don't want to vote on the whole lease, but because the softball and baseball group needs to get moving forward, I don't think this can really wait for them until July, so I would like to maybe just vote on this portion of it, that we're in agreement, that we'll have the lease with that, with this language in it, talking about the fields not being in our lease, but having access to them.
Randy, when they say maintenance, do they mean the mowing, the fertilization, the fences, the garbage?
Yep, all of that will be, will be none, would not be our responsibility anymore.
What about parking? Because I know there isn't really that much.
They do have some plans for parking. They had a diagram where they would have, I believe, on the 119 side, there was going to be some area for parking, and then they were going to have another section of parking. I'm trying to think. So you have the school, the, the fields on the Whitcomb side, there was a section over there that they were going to have some parking for.
Okay. So are you just looking for just a general consensus that this is a good direction?
See if everyone is in agreement for number two of the lease on the lease property, lease premises, on defining the fields that we will have access to, but not responsibility for, and the way that it is stated of what access we do have. Essentially during the school day, there should be no changes as to the access for the school, as well as the public still will not be allowed on the fields during the school day.
And has, has our legal team just looked at the description of how those boundaries are and everything?
Yes.
Everything's good with that? Any other questions?
So I will move that we approve section two only of the Spalding Memorial lease as presented.
Second. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
We'll bring the full lease back when we have the other section that got given to us, so it worked out.
Awesome, thank you. Next up, we have the emergency dispensing sites. Superintendent Morgan.
Yes, so I'm not, I don't recall if I brought this to the school committee previously, but I also didn't sign the documents either. But we are required by the Board of Health to have emergency dispensing sites in all three of our communities, and they are asking for my signature on those documents. They're basically MOUs. So what they're essentially asking is that Ashby Elementary serve is Ashby site along with Mahah Hall. They're asking that the ability to go back to the high school from Hawthorne Brook, prior to the construction, it was at the high school and then it moved to Hawthorne Brook, they would like it to move back to the high school for Townsend, and then Pepperell would be looking to use Nissetisit. The high school information has not come to me as of yet officially, but I did just want to make the, so the Townsend site has not come to me officially, but I, I've been told that that information is forthcoming. So I'm not sure if it's something that the committee wants to consider this evening, but I do have requests from both Ashby and Pepperell to sign off on their dispensing sites, again, being at Ashby Elementary and at Nissetisit Middle. And again, Townsend's going to ask for the high school, which they did have prior to the construction. I just, I'm not sure if I need school committee approval, I just, I wasn't sure, so I brought it to the committee.
I'm just curious, there's two documents, one for Nissetisit Middle School and one for the Pepperell EDS plan. What's the difference between the two of them? Why they're two?
I think the EDS plan, so I did not receive the EDS plan myself, I just received the document to sign off on Nissetisit. The EDS plan, I think it just goes into detail as to how they plan to function as an emergency dispensing site. That came from Kayleen Gendron at the Board of Health. But they are only requesting the use of Nissetisit, not Varanham Brook.
Okay, and this is just in, in the case of an emergency?
Yes, in case there needs to be a mass vaccination, something similar to COVID, if they needed to have a centralized location to do vaccinations.
No, I think I read in here that it talked about having people that were trained. Is that something that we need to have our, unless I was mistaken, I was reading too many things.
It's my understanding it's all handled by the Board of Health.
All by the Board?
Yes.
Okay.
And they do, they're not asking, just to clarify, they're not asking for a school committee member's signature, they're asking for, for my signature, which is why I brought it to you.
Do you have any concerns with any of it?
I don't, no. No, I mean, obviously if something had to happen during a school day, then we would make, make adjustments to make sure that the students were separated from any type of, you know, any, any dispensing site. We could utilize the gym or just a section of the building, much like we do in this voting.
I imagine the instance of bioterrorism, that this will probably be canceled or dismissed?
If it was something where it was a true emergency, likely we would be out of session, yes. But there were situations during, during COVID when vaccinations were being offered to large members, to large numbers of the population, where we weren't sessioned. So it's possible that, that we could also be in school when something like that would be occurring. But again, we'd handle it just like we did, just like we do voting, where the students are separated from that section of the building.
The only thing I would say is I'm fine with, with this being signed, but it should probably be brought to the policy subcommittee to make sure that this is mentioned in our emergency plan policy, and that this is something that the district does.
Prior to signing?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the signing, but I think we need to incorporate it into our policies so that we know in our policies that we're part of this.
Is this a annual, like how often does these get signed?
I don't believe I've done it since I've been here.
Okay. Does, I mean, does this expire? Like what's the term of this agreement?
I did not see that. And I also did not receive full documentation from all of the, for instance, in, for Ashby, for instance, I just received the MOU document. I did not receive the full description that Pepperell sent, but it, but the Ashby MOU is more descriptive than the Pepperell MOU. You know, it basically outlines exactly what they need, and it's, you know, it's a page and a half, and it's very informative as to what they need it for and what they would need in that space, where Pepperell sends a document that's a little bit more difficult to follow, along with a lengthy EDS site plan.
And I'm recognizing this as an emergency, would be an emergency situation, I mean, it does reference that they could use supplies, equipment, facilities, et cetera, at our cost. And then if funds were available, they would reimburse us. Is that a concern and is that language strong enough in our favor?
So it is certainly something that we can send to legal to take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, just curious.
Okay.
Also curious why these documents aren't the same?
Yes, they are all.
Very different.
A little different, but they all came essentially from the heads of the Boards of Health in each of the three communities. So the other thing I can do, even prior to reaching out to legal, is I can certainly hold off on this for now, and I can reach out to the three Boards of Health to find out a little bit more about the costs and try to get a little bit more information. I was slightly under the impression that this was just a renewal of what has been done previously, and they were changing, really just changing the location in Townsend, which again is the one I don't have at this point, just simply changing the location, because I know that in the past, these buildings have been, have been tagged for this use.
Right. Okay. Nancy?
We did do the high school as the emergency dispensing location for Townsend, I think it was maybe a year and a half ago, and maybe a year ago or so. They came, once the building was completed and we moved in, and, because I believe they had the old high school as the previous location, so they came and toured and sort of drew up this similar type plan that they have here.
So I, I vaguely remember that, but I do have, I do have an email from Townsend from about two weeks ago requesting the move again.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure if.
I just got, I got an email about a couple of the players and who was in which positions, and I responded to that, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they could be wanting to change it again, that's possible.
Okay, it actually came, the request I got was from, was directly from the DOH.
As far as the costs go, when there is some kind of emergency, it's often, it could be, if it's a federal emergency, there's often FEMA funds that would help reimburse costs for supplies and overtime if it was needed, things like that.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. You're good?
I'm good.
Moving on to Keystone Collaborative, the Jocelyn Street purchase.
Yes, so this is something that I just had to bring to the committee. I also shared it with Nancy Haynes. Keystone Board voted approval for Keystone to acquire 143 Jocelyn Street in Leamester and to secure a loan of $5.377 million to the Main Street Bank for the purpose of purchasing and renovating that space to turn it into collaborative property and classroom space for, to special education programming. And it does have to be approved by the school committee. It was unanimously approved by, by the executive board, and in essence, I believe what they're looking to do, at least in part, is to prepare for if and when Squanacook does become available if that were to happen. They're certainly aware that we may need that space at some point in time, especially if, again, there ends up being a potential project at Hawthorne Brook, which we have applied for through the MSBA, but we would need that space as flex space between Hawthorne Brook and Squanacook. And again, it just creates a situation where we can't necessarily guarantee them that that space is going to exist for an unlimited amount of time. So they are looking to potentially purchase more space.
What is the, the loan due to any kind of fees and charges for the services?
Did you receive any information from Keystone on that? I did request additional information, and Master Janowitz did say it was forthcoming. I have not yet received it.
I guess I haven't gone out to get the loan yet, so they might not have the term and all that established yet. They probably have a short term, they might have a long-term rate away, but they could do a short term and then.
Or I guess I should ask, do they address the cost for this in tuition? Do they bill it as debt for the, the current members?
It comes, yeah, it would come through the tuition that the member towns pay.
This is, again, just a little bit of background information. They have been looking probably for about three years for a space, and this actually gives them a space that is very close to their headquarters and centrally located to its member communities. And again, that's, it's a potential, potential replacement for half of what Squanacook is able to offer them, but Squanacook has always been somewhat of an issue for Keystone, just because of its location being a little bit on the outer stretches of, of their borders, so to speak, creating some very long bus rides to some of their students. But I do not have all of the loan information at this point in time. I was told it had to be approved. I was told it had to be approved by our committee, though.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, then I will take a motion to approve the Keystone Collaborative Jocelyn Street purchase agreement as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the school committee operating protocols, so a couple purposes for this. One is to just review and refresh what our operating protocols are as a committee, and the second is to open it up for discussion, if there's any feedback or changes. I am going to read this, just mainly for the public's benefit, but the role of the school committee is to approve educational goals and standards, establish policy, sets the budget, hires and values, the superintendent approves the appointment of the assistant superintendent, special education director, school business officer, legal counsel, and physicians, nurses, attendants, officers, and is the employer of record on collective bargaining agreements while representing the needs of all students. The school committee will conduct its business through a set agenda developed collaboratively by the chair, and the superintendent recognizes that only the committee as a whole has authority, recognizes the importance of proactive communication, and avoids surprises during meetings by attempting to provide motions, amendments, and documents ahead of meetings. Support one another as professionals, lead by example, assume positive intentions of all members, encourage debate and differing opinions. Avoid bias and instead consider research, best practice, public input, and financial impacts in all decision-making, and then support decisions regardless of personal opinion. RSVP to all meeting invitations to ensure a quorum. Respect recommendations made by subcommittees. Recognize the importance of working collaboratively with member town officials to improve our district and actively seek ways to enlist their support for our efforts. Encourage constituents to follow the chain of command procedures established by the district and adhere to the school committee's staff communication policy, GBD, and model that policy by going through the superintendent for all requests, and honor the confidentiality of the discussions held in executive session. So those are the protocols as they stand currently. Any questions, comments, feedback? Anyone desire to make any updates?
I do have something, I'm not sure if we should add it to the protocols or the norms, but I do think that we should perhaps have something that school committee members should have their cameras on during virtual meetings. We've talked about it on the communications committee before, and, you know, I just, I think that should be added somewhere. I, you know, with an exception if, you know, obviously, sometimes that may not be possible, but. So, yeah, I'm not sure, I was thinking norms, but where this has like RSVP to meetings, and it's just kind of, you know, I don't know if it kind of falls along those lines.
I would lean towards meetings, just because it's in the meeting. Would be my personal opinion, but I don't know if others feel differently. All right. So we can take that up at the next agenda.
Thank you.
Any other feedback on the protocols? Otherwise, they will stay as is. Okay. Excellent, so those will be our operating protocols, or continue to be our operating protocols moving forward. Next, we have our meeting norms, same thing, so we have a set of meeting norms, there's six of them. So the first is, this is a safe and respectful room. Each person will be present during meetings, avoid side conversations, and limit cell phone use to emergencies only. All ideas are valid and deserve our full attention. Each person has the opportunity to speak uninterrupted and will be mindful of using their fair share of meeting time. We are here to focus on the growth and improvement of NM, our students and the community, not place blame, and members will raise issues of discomfort with other members within 24 hours of the meeting and commit to letting the issue go after the discussion has taken place. June?
Yes, I think that we should consider adding that all school committee members have their cameras on during virtual meetings.
I fully agree with that, I mean, we are a public body and here to serve the community, and it's no different than, in my mind, being here in the room with an audience of hundreds of people, but open for discussion. For those at home, there's not a single person in this room.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that, and obviously, I don't think it needs to be stated in here, but, you know, with exception every now and then, not very often, but there are legitimate reasons why someone would not have their camera on, but it should just be announced to the board, or to us, on this reason why, and, but again, it's good to see everybody's face and have a conversation, you know, with eye contact as best we can over Zoom.
How would people feel about amending it to being during votes? Right, that way, we're on camera, being videoed during those votes, I mean, I know, in my house, it's hard to find a quiet place to have those meetings unless I'm in executive session. I mean, I can make it, but these are hour-long, hours-long meetings, and so taking up that room can be a bit of a challenge. I don't know. I don't mind having my camera on, it's generally on during the meeting, but
I mean, personally, I like to see the body language and honestly know that people are present in the meeting. Even if, I mean, sound is one thing, but I think just seeing that, for me, is important. We go through this at work all the time, it's usually those with the camera off are the ones that are, "Oh, I was on mute, can you repeat the question?" It's like, "What?" So, which makes no sense. What if we said all committee members shall endeavor to have their cameras on, where, maybe leave it open to a little exception, or no? What?
I just think, you know, part of the norms would just be, any exceptions to the norms would be announced.
Just announced, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So all committee members shall have their cameras on during virtual meetings? Is that what you do?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? All right, so we will add that, and then I'll take a motion, if there's no other discussion on the norms, to approve the North Middlesex Regional School Committee meeting norms as amended.
So moved. Second.
Jessica, any last comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that is unanimous, thank you, everybody. Next up, the superintendent evaluation, so I'd sent out kind of the framework for the evaluation, the template, and I know the superintendent had sent out his self-evaluation, I believe, a week or so ago? Probably sent all those emails. So I've asked that folks have that back by this Thursday, I believe, is the deadline I'd asked for. That'll give me a few days to compile and send it back out, make sure that I compiled everything right, and then we may need a special meeting, it can be remote, just to go through that piece, because I would prefer not to wait till July 20th to do that. So if folks are good at that, we'll find an agreeable time, and once we've had time to review the evaluation and all that. Were you looking for us to take action on that tonight, or are you okay?
I didn't have that.
Okay. I didn't have that either, so?
No.
Okay, then we will, unless there's any questions on the evaluation, the process, or the deadline, we will move on. All right, last, on the new business, school committee member representation, Randy?
So, everybody knows we've been trying to update our regional agreement, and every time we submit to DESE, we have some new requirement that we need to meet. The latest we've discussed a little bit was the representation for the one-person-one-vote. Our current configuration does not meet, at least their definition of that today, even though it was court-ordered back in 91, or whatever year that was. And so, two options in front of us that we can vote on, and then obviously, it'll be part of the regional agreement and have to go through the three towns, is we can certainly go to a weighted voting. I have in your packet what that would look like, the Ashby school committee rep would be a .8 vote, Townsend members would be 1.1 vote each, Pepperell members would be 1.0 votes each, and the at-large members would also be 1.0 votes each. And pretty much, elections would stay the same, there wouldn't be any change as far as elections on how we get elected. When we take our votes, our vote is just per the weight. The only place that that really kind of changes anything is when we have a 2/3 vote that's needed, because a 2/3 vote is six, it's a very solid number, and so that .8 for the school committee, for the Ashby school committee members, and the 1.1 for the Townsend members can create a scenario where three people can void a six-person vote, as far as a 2/3 vote mainly just for the budget. Other than that, we're talking majority votes for everything that we do, this scenario should not change any, in any way, a majority, because it's not a solid number we'd be hitting. So five would still be in every single case that I could come up with, still be five would be a majority with the weighted voting. The other option that we have is to change the configuration of the school committee. And what that would look like would be, there would still be one Ashby representative, Townsend would go to three representatives, Pepperell would go to four representatives, and the at-large members would go down to one at-large member. Obviously, that's a change in the voting on what would be on the ballots, the year the at-large members would be on the ballot, and Townsend and Pepperell would have two separate lines, one for their town rep and one for the at-large member that year. That would be the biggest change there. Everything else, because everyone, there's no weighted voting, all of the voting would stay exactly the same as it is now. So I'd like to open up two conversations as far as how people feel about the two different configurations.
I do think the weighted voting is very confusing for people, I think for us, figuring things out, but for the public as well, and for the Ashby rep to not even have one full vote doesn't really seem right. I think the, changing the configuration would make a lot more sense, and, for, like I said, for everybody, for us and the general public to view it.
Yeah, Ashby already has one vote, and I'm not interested in them losing any more of a voice, even, you know, though they have the opportunities for more at-large positions, I just, I don't like it. And I also, I like how many at-large, logically, I get where all of this is coming from, it makes sense on paper, but it doesn't make sense to take away the voice of a community that is already feeling like they're having their voice taken away from, and, you know, they are a part of our community, and we are NM, and so we all ought to be NM. Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate the work and the thought and the effort that went into this, but I just don't know that I can get behind either of these, I don't want to lose at-large members, I don't want to lose, and I don't want Ashby to lose any of them.
We have to do, we have
We have, we have to do for one-person-one vote, the only other option is to increase the number of members, but we run into the same kind of scenario with representation, and I think nine is quite a few to handle, I wouldn't want to have the school committee grow in size.
Sorry about that, I don't know how I didn't pick it up.
That's okay. Sorry.
My camera must have been off.
So, yeah, so unfortunately, we do need to do one of these, because, like I said, even though the configuration we have was court-ordered, per how they calculate this today, that wouldn't have met one-person-one vote either. So we have to deal with the powers that be are telling us.
I don't know if anyone here knows the answer, but logistically, if there's both a town rep and an at-large rep on the same ballot, can the same person run for both positions? And then what happens if they win both positions?
I will defer to Jess for some of that, but I believe it would just be they'd have to pull both papers, but I'm not sure, I mean, because I see it like on, the library has two and three-year positions, so.
You can only accept one position.
As the winner?
As the
So you could technically get the most votes for both, and you could decide which one to accept, and then it would go to the next person?
Yeah, theoretically, because even if you had people write you in, which happens all the time with the library, you know, you have a five-year or you have a three-year, whatever the year term is, and then people end up writing you in for both terms, and then when you come to get sworn in at the clerk's office, you have to pick one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then so it would automatically go to the next highest at that point, because you've basically withdrawn?
No, not necessarily, if it's an elected position, it would have to be filled at an election, or if there's something else saying that the board would have the authority to appoint someone if there was still a vacancy, you'd have to look into it.
Yeah, I'd want to know what that means, then.
That would probably just default then to appointing, and depending on whether it's an at-large position or a town position, we fill vacancies by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee representatives, if it's from the town, from that town.
Right.
If it's an at-large member, then it's the Board of Selectmen from all three towns, and all remaining members will go ahead and appoint somebody, so.
And I would not be in favor of that, because then that takes the voice out of the public. So if they, let's say you win by one vote, and then there's a, and you ran for both Townsend and at-large, and you win by one
We do have an option at that point to take the second, the person who would have come in second
Right.
And appoint them.
We have the option, but not the requirement.
Not the requirement.
Right, so that would be something I'd want to better understand.
Isn't that written in the regional agreement about the appointment from the town selectman?
It is. I'm thinking about that, thank you, Lisa, for bringing that up, that means we can probably put that into the regional agreement
Okay.
For that position, I'd have to run that through DESE and make sure that they would be good with that.
And with the towns, the towns would have to pay for another election, right? Because if you have it, if it's not an appointment, you have to have an election.
I guess it depends how you look at it, if it's looked at as a vacancy, then we would appoint.
We can have in our regional agreement that if there is a second person that ran for a position, that they would be appointed.
And if it's within so many months of the next election, it can be put off till that election also, so it's not necessarily you have to have one, depending on where it falls.
Right, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm in favor of the straight, not the weighted, the other one, assuming we can figure that piece out. Just because logistically, that would get confusing for voters and
I want to say, I think I was the last appointed member.
It was before me, and I think it was
Yeah, it was me, in 2009, Sky Minkler, I think, had moved out of the area, and so she had to resign her position, if I have the name
We appointed
Because I think in Pepperell
We appointed Rob Templeton when John resigned a few years ago.
Oh, did you? Was Rob appointed?
Rob was appointed the second
Okay, the second time. I wasn't sure, okay. So, we have done it, but we can certainly put caveats in here on the election.
Yeah, okay. Do you need to vote on this tonight? Do we want to look into how
I do like a vote, because I need to send the entire agreement to DESE, because they have to approve it before we can bring it to the towns. So if everyone's comfortable, I'll work with the attorney to find language as far as the voting goes, that if one position is declined, that it would automatically go to the next highest vote getter during the election time, otherwise it will default to our vacancy procedure.
The only thing I could think where that gets messy is if you had, if you had somebody run for both positions, but only one of those positions was contested. run for both positions, but only one of those positions was contested, and then the person chooses the contested position, and then that's just the vacancy.
That's purely up to that, that person.
Yep, okay.
And then it's just, there's no second person, then it's a vacancy, and we, we look to appoint somebody.
I guess that's the same with like the library, when they have multiple terms on the ballot, so it's probably the same. Okay.
How would the representation go now, because we have the three at-large, if we adopt this in the fall?
I would work with the DESE on that portion of it. My guess is the next round of elections is when it would change.
So in April?
No, next round of at-large members. If everyone has read our current agreement, when we were court-ordered to change the representation, it kind of, it says, okay, well, the current members, this one has a three-year term, this one has a two-year term, this one has a one-year term, to get them on the correct cycle, being that we're not changing the cycle, I'd imagine they'd be for, in three years, it would go to the new configuration. At least that's the way I'm going to present it to them, and see what they have to say back to us.
So it would be basically like three years from now, it would, it would...
Okay.
They may not agree to that, that's the only...
Yep. If they don't, then I would, I will bring it all back to everybody here if they have any changes.
Absolutely.
I mean, the full agreement's got to come back here anyway, right? So we're just authorizing you to move to the next step?
Move out, DESE, have it come back here.
All right. Do you want to make that motion?
I will move that we include the new configuration of one Ashby member, three Townsend members, four Pepperell members, and one at-large member for the regional agreement, and that we have, that I have permission to send the completed regional agreement to the DESE for preliminary approval.
So moved.
Second?
Or second?
Lisa has the second.
Sorry.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, Randy. I know this whole calculation thing has been very confusing. All right, on to subcommittee reports. We don't have any old business, so accelerated repair, Lisa?
No.
Ashby Building Committee, June?
No updates right now.
Communications, Tom?
We're trying to put together a meeting, but it's going to be after the fourth, just based on our schedules, to kind of close out the year and just add to the update.
Cool. Thank you. Finance, Lisa?
Nancy has a budget transfer for us.
You want to tackle that?
And then Tom's going to read it.
I'm going to read it, Nancy?
Sure.
Or do you want to explain?
I'm going to just give you a quick explanation. So we're coming to the end of fiscal '23. This is, this budget transfer will move funds from the various categories that school committee is required to approve, and hopefully finish the year without needing any further transfers. There's a lot of things that are moving parts, special education, tuitions, legal bills. We don't have all those final bills yet, so we're, I'm doing my best to estimate how it's going to come out. Hopefully, I'm correct, we don't end up with having to talk about it again, but in the agenda, I laid out the motion. I don't know if I can make a motion, can I?
I can do the motion.
Okay, beautiful. Does anyone have any questions before, I guess?
I just have a quick one.
Yeah, go ahead.
It looks like we have a lot more contracted services that, in the administration. I know you mentioned to me some of it's like based on Medicare. What were some of those other contracts? It seems like each department seems to have contracted services.
Yeah, I guess that's, the big ones were the Medicare billing. So we bill for Medicaid services when a student receives services while in school. We pay a percentage of that billing to UMass, that is our billing for us, and they get a percentage of that. So this year, there's been a lot more billing student services, so therefore, there's a lot more billing, which is a percentage, and that was an estimate. In the contracted services in the administration section, there's legal services, there's been a lot more legal services, both sides, particularly on the special ed side. We have the, the school committee PR firm that was added, not added, but was not budgeted, so therefore, needed to fund, and we had a personnel study on the, on the HR side, which is still, I believe, in process, we're reviewing salary structures and... Okay. Those are the big ones.
All right, thank you.
Question? No?
So I move that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget transfer as follows. Transfer in to be added to the following categories: $70,136.85 to administration, $84,991.94 to instructional support, $129,176.88 to payments to out-of-district schools and transportation, and transfer to be covered by transfers out from $59,585.63 from pupil services, $224,720.04 from insurance, retirement, and other, for a total transfer of $284,305.67.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that is unanimous, thank you. Anything else on finance, Lisa?
No.
Negotiation personnel, Lisa, Dave?
We'll get to it at an executive session.
Okay. Policy, Randy?
Let me just bring it up one moment. So we have policy KF-E1, just school facility use rental and personnel fee schedule up for adoption. I have not received any communication from the public, nor anybody on the committee for any changes that are requested or questioned, so I will move that we approve file or policy KF-E1 for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, Dave has left the room. So this is reapproval of KF-E1. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll mark David as an abstention since he is not... All right, anything else on policy, Randy?
That's all for now.
All right. Liaisons to the slot boards, any updates from Ashby, Pepperell, or Townsend?
No, not for me.
No.
Nothing from Dave. Okay, then I will, if there's no other open business, I will take a motion.
Yeah, I'm warmed up, it's fine. Unless you want to...
No, go right ahead.
All right. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General 法 Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purpose. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Executive session minutes dated April 21, 2021. Executive session minutes dated May 24, 2023. The committee will reconvene in open session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. All right, this is to enter executive session. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the committee will now be meeting in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. This is executive session minutes dated April 21, 2021, and May 24, 2023. The committee will reconvene in open session. Anybody not on the committee? Thank you very much. All right, we are back in open session, and we have no further business this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
David, Jessica, thank you. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. We are adjourned, have a good night, everybody.